We're going to call this meeting or call it, but thank you to one of y'all for being here. And so we can carry on county business. And I don't see anyone with the video. We are zooming the meeting again. We're sending it out by air. Let's put it that way. And so, um, but we do certainly appreciate your being here. And if your cell phone rings, if you would just please go outside, answer it, then come in again. Um, or you might check it by comparison to do mine and turn it off while you're in this meeting. And that still does not guarantee it's not going to ring. So now, um, I'm going to call on Commissioner Rushing. If he'll stand and if y'all are standing with him, we're going to give a case of collective listening.
You guys with the place, yeah, with all of us, I'd like to thank you for this day and thank you for all your many blessings. I'd like to thank you for each and every one here and everybody that they represent, Lord. Oh, I'd just like to thank you for all the progress that's been made with the COVID-19 virus and just watch over us as we get businesses back up running. And just ask for special blessing on the ones that's on the frontline right on the doctors and the nurses and the law enforcement and our enforcement, Lord. And just please be with the ones that have deaths and their families safe and breathing. Please build this commission that ever decision we make be pleasing you, if I may ask me Jesus' name.
From the United States of America, and this is a republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with every religion and faith.
Thank you, Commissioner Rushing. Um, we will now have the roll call of Ms. Gaines.
I would say, Gaines, first and ask, could this board commissioner group town hereby call and roll phones on the building bodies? All those present, all those present should answer by saying hi Chairman Wood Thompson, Vice Chairman Jeffy Springer, Commissioner Ray Lowes, Commissioner Anthony Simmons, Commissioner Kurt Deal, Commissioner Kenny Rushing, Commissioner Walter Gibson. I determine that we have all members of the board of commissioners present. Therefore, we have a forum to conduct business by doing the citizen support campaign. I now leave the floor to you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. And I know each commissioner has looked over the zoning agenda and I'd like to call for motion, please.
So move as chairman.
A motion second to approve the zoning agenda and there's no further discussion. We're going to call Mr. Newman to proceed with the zoning matters. All right, sir. Uh, we have two items tonight, Chairman. Item number one, Williams Family Limited Partnership submitted an application to rezone 25 acres from R40 to Act Five to allow for a solar electrical power generation facility. The property is located on Williams Road. Mr. Michael Canal of Radiant Solar will be acting as agent tonight. Planning and zoning made a recommendation to approve the request by a four to zero vote. As you can see, this is the property located on Williams Road and all that. Had them zoned, when zoning came in, was on R40 at that time. Uh, this is the sign of the property and this is looking down Williams Road, um, back towards town. And across the road, there are a few homes. And this is looking toward the bypass. And you'll see both signs on here. We will have conditional use after the reasonable request. And right now, it's partial woods and partial field is what the property looks like. And this will be the request they have for the solar farm. So, um, Michael, you may. And then Chris, if you'd like to go on up.
Thank you very much, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Michael Canal of Radiant Solar. I'm joined here by some individuals from Samsung that developed this project in partnership with us. Chris Simmons and John Lee. Our plan is to rezone approximately 25 acres of R40 land into Act Five to develop a solar project. We have won the bid for a contract with Georgia Power and Southern Energy. Uh, we have complied with all the ordinance set before us and we are good with the conditions of an additional use permit. And we look forward to addressing anyone's concerns and being a good neighbor.
I'm Chris Simmons. I'm the land manager for Samsung and I facilitate all landowner negotiations inside development processes on the eastern half of the United States for Samsung. Uh, on behalf of Michael, I just wanted to say thank you for your time and cooperation when you consider our project. And we're here to be your neighbors and for your support.
Thank y'all for your comments and we're going to ask now any questions or comments from the Commissioners. Are you none? I'll call for a motion.
Chairman, now move.
All right, then, um, all those in favor of the motion, show of hands. You have an approval and, um, so motion carries. So, um, we'll go straight into item two. All right, item number two, the Williams Family Limited Partnership submitted an application for a conditional use to allow for a solar electric power generation facility. This property is located on Williams Road. Michael Canal of Radiant Solar will be acting as agent. And they have a note that the conditional use request was voided. They did not approve the reason which you approved the reason. So we can hear this tonight. Uh, planning and zoning recommended, uh, to approve the request with modified conditions uh, by a four to zero vote. We had actually put a condition on that they could not access onto Miller Street Extension, but they say that they do have easement going to Miller Street Extension and PMZ said that we find for them to use that existing easement. So basically, I have the same two gentlemen for this one and the photographs are exactly the same thing as what you just saw. So if you got anything you want to add. Now, I will actually again ask the Commissioners, do you have any question here coming in? Nobody signed up against it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Can we approve this?
Second, a motion to modify the condition.
We need a modified condition.
A motion is second, any more discussion? Not a need, but show of hand for approval of the motion. An unanimous approval. Thank y'all for coming. Well, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much. Before I entertain a motion to approve the general agenda, do we have any other discussion or modifications desired by the county manager or the board?
County manager, is there this evening, Mr. Chairman?
No, as per motion approved, the general agenda. Second, a motion, I have a second, any more discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion, show of hand. An unanimous approval. Next on the agenda is the, um, it's a public hearing to abandon a portion of County Road number 122, also known as the PB Brandon Road. And we will now, I need a motion now to open the floor for comments. For someone here. So move, Mr. Chairman, motion. A motion, second, second. All those in favor, show of hands. The public hearing is now open and, um, we have anybody signed up? There's no one signed up, um, to speak for or against?
Chairman, I would like some comments that I talked with people late last week, Saturday. And several was born and families had lived out that way. Of course, I'd use every opinion myself, couldn't prove. And they indicated that they were, they thought it'd be a great idea to open Smith families, the Smith family and others. So I told them I would bring the cases to the board tonight. And, uh, of course, Smith is one of our former co-理事, as all of you know. But they just thought it was a convenience because they've used it many times over the years as a cut through to the next road. So I told them I would bring that up this afternoon and they got another commitment on maybe within him. So I thought that passed, I don't do you and all the other Commissioners.
I guess, I guess this is the first time that we have had a petition to close a road and no one to be here in opposition or for it. Um. Would the Chairman yield further?
Yes, sir. Because I can't quote it as eloquently as the county attorney does. But, um, could I, could I ask Mr. Atkins if, uh, he could describe, uh, the legal definition for the purpose of closing a road? Am I stating that correctly?
Yes, I'm glad you asked that because I think that's important to know. And also, it might be good, but the section of PB Brandon Road, this is not the entire road, but the petition that Brad received was to close, uh, the portion between the intersection with Williams Road and the intersection with, um, Johnny Brandon Road. So it was that particular section. Um, and the standard is that you have to find that the road has ceased to have been used by the public to the extent that no substantial public purpose is served by it or let its removal from the county road systems otherwise in the best public interest.
And I would comment, while that's very broad, um, you know, I think the law asks you to use your discretion in trying to interpret that. So that isn't to dismiss the comments that Commissioner Gibson provided. But I think it was just important to have that standard reviewed again and as you contemplated. And, um, now, in my opinion, if there are those of you who may be a little bit undecided, there is a possibility that, that we could defer this in order to gain, you know, additional public comment. But I think we have to go through the hearing process again. Is that, is that correct? Or can we even reconsider it later?
Yeah, I mean, you could consider it later. Probably I would recommend, yeah, having another public hearing if you wanted to defer it initially.
I was just trying to, I was just trying to give the Commissioners a menu of options to work with because the Chairman's correct too. Normally, if there's public opposition, they're present in person.
Right. I think the key thing to keep in mind is that it has to be, the focus is on the public interest, not, not that it benefits, you know, one particular party or that it benefit the public in their interest to close it. And I thought a copy of the petition was in the pack. I may have neglected to send that. It might be when I sent my email. I don't remember. Brad, do you remember what the reasons stated on the petition was?
There's a field on both sides of the road and he wants to run it, pivot it across the road. It's basically the same property owner on both sides of the road. And all the property owners signed the petition that are on that section of the road.
All, all property owners on that section of the road signed the petition to close it?
Yes, sir.
The issue that we have is if one person, the public, thinks that road is used by them and it's an unclosable road. You know, I've given some thought to this one and, and one comment that Commissioner Gibson made was that everybody had appointments tonight. Uh, I'm going to make a recommendation to you. We'll do whatever y'all, I don't vote. We'll do whatever y'all want to do. But I would recommend to defer this. We'll have another public hearing. And so maybe some of these folks can come and speak for themselves. I don't know how y'all feel about it, but, um, if you want to have further discussion, then now it's time to speak.
There's no further discussion, Mark, like the note we just deferred.
Second, a motion, I have a second, any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, show of hand. The, this decision's been deferred to another meeting, so we'll have another public hearing, another public.
It's July sixth, the next.
Yes, sir.
Night meeting.
Yes, sir. I don't know if we could put a note on there that it's very beneficial if somebody would attend the meeting. In my opinion, because, how many times can we defer it without someone signing up and coming?
I guess theoretically you can defer it, but I wouldn't suggest that. If nobody shows a connection, maybe I'll go ahead and vote on it.
And my, my suggestion is to say if, uh, people can't be here, they could, uh, you know, Commissioners have contact with such constituents, maybe written comments in lieu of physical presence.
Okay, we're going to move on to the public comments and, um, yes, I need a, I need a motion to close this, um, public hearing. No, a motion, second, all those in favor, show of hands. All right, public hearing is now closed. We'll move now into public comments and I'd like to state that, um, we will have four minutes per person uh, to speak and speak to us, to the Commissioners, if you will. And I say that because we have had a lot of public meetings and comments before and then the arguments, but we don't allow that. And so if y'all speak directly to us and we're going to listen to you and we will, you'll have four minutes. And we will use the time clock. When that time clock goes off, if you're in the middle of the sentence, please finish it. And then you can sit down and we'll call the next one. And I think we're going to have. Bruce, are you going, you going to speak for both of y'all?
Yeah.
Okay.
This whole group here, so I don't know if I can do it all in four minutes unless somebody wants to buy their time for me.
Well, you got 12 minutes. I guess they will give you their four minutes.
Well, I got eight, well, I ate them. If they want to use their time.
We'll stop you at four minutes and then we'll see you. And, um.
All right, I'm up here and I've been talking with Mr. Roy and I've been talking with Dan, and they're one. We have got an issue on Highway 46 between 119, Arcola, Arcola to 67. We got excessive, excessive truck traffic. There was a near miss accident there two weeks ago. A new tractor trailer just get on break. Mr. Bennett actually made it 425 feet. I saw it around the school bus and just all the way around it, almost wiped out whole school bus of kids. Right? Highway 46, I talked to several people with DOT. It's a $56 pound highway. It's got 10 ton bridge on it. They are burning off the I-16. There's no reason for them to come down there. They got I-16 right out there. They can run 70 mile an hour. There's no reason for them to be on 46. That's a through road, at all. And everybody was upset and they had that near miss two weeks ago and really got involved. There's just no, and that could have been bad. Now we got 10 ton bridge and $56 pound highway that's being afterward destroyed. Well, Brad was down there today. He seen the highway condition is getting in because it's getting bad, rough from the big trucks being on it. And I know for a fact, because I worked with them, the big trucks coming out before it, it's a way up to 100,000 pounds. Up to 100,000 pounds. I'm sorry, bud.
Oh, I love it. You're paranoid, Charlie.
Yeah, I know. And they coming up 46, so, and Brad was there today. Mr. Butler gave some signs made, correct? The DOT said they would absolutely come down there and enforce it if we had signage in place. Mr. Butler's got everything I think he needs, uh, to do that at this point for signage to keep trucks off of it. Another thing we want to bring up is speed limit on Highway 46. It's never been assessed on the old 46. But from what I gather from the sheriff's office, they go around 100 mile an hour down here. They can't do nothing because it's just never been assessed by the DOT. So I would like to bring up to make that whole section there 45 mile an hour. There's no reason, you got I-16, if you want to run 70 mile an hour, run in parallel to it. There's no reason somebody needs to come down 46 no more than 45 mile an hour. I'm sure the sheriff's going to give them 55 mile an hour or a little bug for the 84 motor. Right now, if you put 55, they'll be running 70. There's a lot of kids, there's a lot of people in and out the driveway. There's a blind spot down there now where people built houses. There's no need for that section to be no more than 45 mile an hour. And I would like to present for the Commission to take forward too, to make Arcola and, uh, 46 a four-way stop. There's a lot of traffic there. There's been some bad action in two years. Arcola Road is a tough road with people in Lee Field, Brooklyn, things going I-16. There's a lot of traffic there. And probably more so in the afternoons and the morning, once that bridge gets made or fixed on Arcola Road. There's probably more traffic on Arcola than it is 46 because you got the equal amount of traffic if not more on Arcola. And that would deter the big trucks as well on that road. And I would, someone said that DOT don't like, uh, four-way stops. But I went the way across to several places over the weekend, last weekend. There's four-way stops everywhere the DOT has. They got one at 280 and 169. I mean, that's the main grand section. And so I think, I, I don't, I don't need to, I don't think I deal with that four-way stop. It can happen. It's, it's a safety issue, it's a public safety issue. Anybody drives that road, there's kids on that road and everybody lives on that road. There's no need for nobody to be driving over 50 mile an hour, 45, 50 mile an hour. The sheriff's department, I'm sure, is going to give them up to 55 mile an hour or 40, or 50 or more. But right now, they, you put 55, they gonna, they gonna push it to 70. And that is, that's anxious. And you should go, go to that stop sign anytime and you'll see people coming off the interstate, one way or the other, blowing that stop sign at, uh, 46 and Arcola.
We're going to reset the clock for you, put another four minutes.
Yeah, but. Can I do a sec?
Yeah, yeah.
Time's up. But this is what I want to bring up. I understand, um, the Commissioners got to go make the requirement, you know, uh, for the four-way stop and, and speed limit on a road like that. Am I right? That's what I was told. They got to make the recommendations to be safe. Am I right?
Which one are we talking about? The four-way stop or?
The four-way stop and the speed limit.
The four-way stop would be up to the county, not the state, because it's intersection of two county roads. So it would be on us to do a traffic study. What I would recommend is we go by the NDTCD, which kind of outlines the guidelines for a four-way stop, where to put one, where not to put one, that kind of thing. Um, so we can do a traffic study, get traffic counts, get the accident data and then go and buy those guidelines. We can determine later not to put a four-way stop. As far as the speed limit, we would have to do a traffic study, send that to DOT and then DOT agree.
Well, this is, this is all, and Brad, I respect much of some of that. But you, you, you go strictly by the book and that book don't even work. You gotta use common sense and places too. I'm sorry. That, that four-way stop out there would save a lot of lives, slow down a lot of trucks. And that is a residential and that, yeah, that could be a state road. 55 mile an hour might work one time. There's a lot of people moving in there and you can say, oh, it was 55 mile an hour, it played by the state years ago. But if they want to run 70 mile an hour or 55, they can get it out there on the interstate. You can stay in my house and look at interstate. All they got to do is go three tenths of a mile this way, run 70 mile an hour and go three, tenths of a mile back that way and they do it. So why are they on that 46 station that's long there, carrying it up, putting these people's life in danger? Putting them in danger. Four-way stop there. What's going to hurt? If they don't want to go through a four-way stop, go for two tenths, three tenths of a mile and go down to I-16. Sometimes common sense fails. I'm sorry.
Well, now, what, it's like where Denver, Denver Coleman Ward, I mean, it's 45 mile.
On that one road section right there. But, well, it's not now because it hasn't been assessed. Sign out there, it's a big, they have a sign there, but I think it's, if, 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 I'm better than I tell you what it is, but it's, it's, uh, it's worth it. And the signs just got put up, what, last week? There wasn't a sign there. Now, on my GPS, from on my, on my navigation, I got a fairly new Ford truck, you know, from. Now, on my GPS, from, on my, on my navigation, on, I got a fairly new Ford truck, you know, from, from, and it says from Arcola to sixty-seven, forty-five the whole way. And GPS gets their readings, I don't know where to get from, they told me, they get them from DOT, they don't pull them out of air. So, I mean, like I said, I'm sorry, you got safety issues down there, you got people living down there, there's no reason somebody be using that fifty-five mile an hour cut through road. There's no, there's no earthly reason why the I sixteen right there. Mr. Butler's gonna get the signs, hopefully, what, what do you think signs be like?
We picked up the bridge limit signs today. And we're going to meet with the DOT about placement of those signs, uh, as to whether we could possibly place it on DOT right away at one nineteen end, gives the, uh, option of turning, uh, because they have to have a place to turn around once you post a bridge sign.
Well, Brad, I would...
If we can get approval to do that with DOT, then we'll post them tomorrow.
Brad and I looked at it today, it could still be put on county property and have ample room to turn around. Now, I had this concern about going on down the road, putting them on, on the DOT, because truckers don't know where to go then. If you go down the road past, past one nineteen turnoff, they don't know what's going on. It need, it needs to be on the county property, right there, but Brad and I looked at it earlier today.
Right, no issue with that, if somebody's going fifty-five, sixty mile an hour, they're not gonna have time to turn, by the time they're ready to sign.
Yeah, well, you have a good idea to go ahead and put a martie out there to warn people, you know, see if we got a martie, go ahead and put the big martie out there, that's a real good idea, Brad, if we could, we can initiate that.
Right, we got signs, we got, we got, we got...
But the martie would be a good thing to go ahead and give everybody a warning, and even with the sign up, okay, there's a sign here, guys.
Yeah, we could do that as soon as possible.
Yeah. Anyway, I propose we get that part of the time to help out, the road is getting deteriorated. Now, I know it's earmarked to be resurfaced, which is great, but if we don't do something, get a hundred thousand pound, eighty thousand pound trucks off, we gotta do more resurfacing, it's gonna probably have to be three bays. And, uh, but, and that bridge is, you know, a hundred thousand pound truck coming, a ten ton bridge, forty thousand pounds. You know, I hate to say it, but that truck driver going off, he falls into it, that's, he's gonna hit it. I don't want him to break it down, and a school bus with kids or some woman coming by with, with little babies and it taking in a wind. That'd be terrible, and that would be on us. That'd be the safety issue, it'd be on us, everybody in this room. If something like that happened. And, uh, so, but please consider the four-way stop there and forty-five mile an hour speed limit from one end to forty-six to the other, so there's no need, somebody, if they want to run fast, I sixteen right there, they can run seventy, seventy-five mile an hour and cut it up in sixty-seven. No need to be going fifty-five mile an hour. Does any questions for me?
Can I ask? And this is just for me personally, I'm sure there might be some other questions, is everything that you've asked, is that doable?
Yes, sir, we can study all of that, in fact, we've already been looking at some of the things that, that you asked about. But now, I will say, just on the speed limit issue, we have to send a traffic study to DOT, DOT relies, they don't rely completely, but they rely heavily on the natural flow of traffic on the road, how, how fast are, are the cars going? There is a maximum speed limit on a road like that, in accordance with state, state law, was fifty-five mile an hour, so we, we would never set higher than that, of course, but, according to the information we've got, most of the traffic is going over sixty miles an hour out there right now. So, I'm just saying that upfront to say it, it's gonna be difficult to make a speed limit forty-five on a road where everybody's going sixty-five.
Well, that's, that, that's exactly why we're doing that, right, that's exactly why we want it, you need to reduce it to forty-five, if they gonna be running fifty-five, I know that. Because the county, the, the, how, how fast the Florida state goes, move, five mile an hour? Yeah, five mile an hour, you guys don't put them over to ten, fifteen? So, I mean, so you, you gonna put a fifty-five out there and have somebody run seventy mile an hour in front of a house with kids in the yard? I mean, like I said, sir, common sense has got to prevail at some point. The book's good, believe me, I got a bunch up here too, I got a lot of work on there, but you gotta put common sense in place, and this is what we need to do right here. You know? So, any other questions, comments, need?
About the study, I, I know, uh, DOT's done several studies on forty-six, especially with that bridge right there on Cadash Branch. And Arcola Road, they've inserted, they've, uh, studied, did, uh, traffic studies on it, why we gotta go do another? I mean, it's just got worse since the last one, it's just a little bad.
Which area of city are we talking about?
On both, Arcola Road and forty-six. The other team did one back before, the county did one, why I don't know, but they did.
Okay, yeah, those kids.
On the road now, who's doing that? Who's got strips on the road now?
We had ours out about two weeks ago, somewhere around there, about two weeks ago.
And I know there's, there's, there's been several people killed on Arcola Road, forty-six. Several people maimed up bad, every time it happens, somebody comes up there and they want a red light, they want all this, that, I ain't asking for that, all we need is a four-way stop there. If they want to stop with a four-way stop, they, they can go interstate.
Well, I, I would like to offer one, one opinion about the intersections, or I, if, if we were gonna take a little time to do it right, on, on something, I think it would be thoughtful to put some study into it because, forgive me, is there a little flash and white out there, I can't remember?
No, no, they used to be in my round over. No, there's, there's nothing there.
Yeah, okay, I, I hadn't been out there in a while, but, you know, I'm not an engineer, but in, in, in my mind, if, if you, if you were really gonna make that visible, because I've been out there in the daytime and the nighttime, you know, like, if we were gonna have a four-way stop, then it was worn, you know, I, personally, I would like to see some kind of nighttime intersection lighting, you know, let people know that it's there, possibly some rumble strips, uh, on forty-six, well, maybe on the, our, our Cola Nash Branch side too, just to get people slow to slow down, hopefully, before the intersection. And, um, I, I think in just managing expectations, it requires us a little bit more than just taking four stops on it.
No, sir, you, you, you get me wrong, I don't want nobody coming out there and sticking a Walmart, go, 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 stop, stop sign, it needs to be done properly, done right. Nowadays, nowadays, it, it's not as bad as used to, used to have to have a white power and all that, they got the solar lights now.
Sure.
That works, and it's, you know, and cheaper, it goes around the end of the sign. So, back before, we could try to get a caution light there, but it was, it was so powered there, it was fortunate for power in there. Now, we don't have that issue no more, you got solar power. So, yes, you're exactly right, I appreciate it, it needs to be done, it needs to be even as right, I don't want, nobody to go up there and just take a stop sign up in the middle of the road and say people are into it.
Um, well, actually, I think we, there's an outside chance we could accomplish something with the intersection faster than get, getting DOT, well, maybe DOT will do a good traffic or speed study. But, um, you know, the worst case scenario would be, and this is my biggest fear, hopefully they come back with a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, but, that road was built to a state standard many years ago and, um, the question would be begged, what would we, what would we do if they came back and recommended fifty-five?
Well, I was, I was told, y'all tell me right, because y'all have probably done this, I, you know, for like, I, I ride a little slow, you go down these roads and all of a sudden you get a forty-five mile an hour in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah.
And, uh, I was told if the commissioners request it, if the county maintain a road in county, they can, they can request what they want it to be, they do the study, and the commission, if we go forward, has a commission that says, we would like that road forty-five mile an hour to do, I guess, the common sense. You know?
Generally, that's been correct in the past, I, I would agree and I would hope, you know, our relationship is such, is such with the DOT where they, uh, they would be the company. Sometimes they come back to us with some peculiar stuff, is that a good way to put it?
Now, can I, can, can I be in the loop of what, you know, sent the DOT and be abreast of what's going on? Where I won't have to call and say, what you doing, what you doing, what you doing?
Well, I think on our end, that's easy to accomplish.
Yeah.
But once we hand it off to DOT, we're on their time clock.
Yeah, and once, once on their time clock, so if they take their time, I, I could go find out what happened.
I'm not sure if I'm allowed to speak right now, but I'm gonna tell you that the reason that there's so many eighteen wheelers is that they come down eighty and they want to bypass the scales.
I realize that.
That, that's, that's the reason, they don't want to go through the scales.
And we gotta get them off there.
Because they'll pull their truck in there and it red that, that's the reason.
And I appreciate that.
All these cars now coming up sixteen, they're coming up, oh, one nine, eighty, one nine.
Yeah.
Forty-nine trucks last Thursday, they might hope that.
They want to skip the scales.
Yeah, but we gonna get the signs up there, correct?
With the lifetime of the, of, but the, the, truck drivers, I got CDL, they can't read it, no. You have to put flashing lights or something on the signs so the city, people can, they can't, the truck driver, always see you at the road, they don't see the signs. Then when you leave, we enforce it, which you meant to keep, you have to black, they got five officers in the big old county, I'm sorry, within my time. It's upsetting, there's no shooting out there, at least people just run over you, you have to wait to get out of the deck.
I'm sorry, I called, I called it to DOT, the commander.
Sir?
Commander Hampton, said if we get the signs, he promised me he would come down there and patrol.
Let, let's do something because twelve, just about up there. And, and we do hear you, um, but we do have signs, it's, I don't have the roadway limit, we do have bridge limit signs in hand. You know, that concerns me as much as anything, you gotta, what was it, a ten ton?
Ten ton bridge.
Bridge in eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, hundred pound trucks coming up on that four-way cross.
That, now, I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen there, but gonna trust one thing to happen, that the DOT will do what they have told you that they will do.
They will do it, I, I got a number of personal problems in my pocket.
Um, so, I'm, I'm gonna recommend something, just, it cannot all happen tonight. But if y'all will trust us to do something, I think that we've already gained that because we've met, we've talked, done everything that we said that we would do, we go ahead and it's, the, the signs, we put the signs up that we've got, and then we do have conversation with the DOT, you know, about road speed limit. Um, and I guess, I'm understanding that we do not have to make them aware we're gonna put up a four-way stop.
No, we wouldn't have to do that.
Now, because that brings me back to what we did at Brooklyn Denmark down there with the, you know, Brooklyn, um, Brooklyn Denmark and Brad and Paul down there. Arrested telephone calls that we all received there, but, you know, it stopped accidents.
Yeah, I think Mr. Butler said they haven't, haven't had a major accident.
I'm gonna wood, I'm gonna wood.
So, uh, we will honor your request, you know, once we get everything in order, we'll get back to you and, and, um...
Mr. Chairman, uh, when, did you say that you will have to meet, that you're gonna have to meet with DOT before you can stop signs? Have you, 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 well, depend on where you put them.
Yeah, we're, 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 we've already spoke to the DOT officer that's responsible for signage on the road, and we're supposed to meet with them, hopefully tomorrow, uh, on site, to determine where they will allow us to place the sign. The issue is, is that state highway makes a ninety degree turn to go back to the interstate, or, uh, go back towards Cranbrook at one nineteen, and we're not supposed to place county maintained, county signs on state roadway. But if we place that sign on county roadway, we've not given the trucks an advanced notice or a point of turnaround to keep from crossing that bridge. So, we're gonna meet with them and see if there's an alternative to back it up on state roadway to place the sign, so that they have enough advanced notice to make the turn. And, uh, the only...
I'm fine with that, I, I just, you run up a good point, and maybe when y'all meet with DOT tomorrow, maybe speed things up. Just ask the question where, where the data's coming from, from the, the new, the new vehicles on the speed limit signs, like, it just, if it may speed up a, or, or not have to do it.
On speed limit stuff?
On speed limit, I'm just talking about, yeah, I'm, sign placement, I'm, I'm good with that, but...
Yeah.
Just, uh, just ask the question and find out where that data's coming from, I think. Maybe we can speed something up.
Brad, I can speak to this a little better, but it came up because Mr. Sonnen asked about the speed limit, forty-five mile an hour speed zone, there was one sign there, I think we added another one or something anyway. We got those up in that forty-five mile an hour area there, but when we started researching the speed limit for the whole road, there's never been an indication that the DOT has gave a recommendation on it since it was turned over to the county, and the county has never evidently instigated any issue about trying to research that. Uh, so, in my communication with Sheriff's Department and, um, Officer Glamour, uh, he says he's already spoke with the DOT and with Public Safety for review, that as soon as we can submit a request or a recommendation, that they will help push that through. He said he has those, he's already made those contacts. So, it's just a matter of us having the information to submit now, as far as the speed limit goes, and, and then we'll see whether, whether that comes back at forty-five or whether it comes back at fifty-five and then, you know, then it would be presented back to the commission for acceptance or, or another recommendation, uh, to, to be asked for forgiveness or, or something lesser than. So, it's, it's in process, the, the actual limit, road limit signs, um, have been ordered, but they're kind of in special order because they have to be specific to the weight limit. So, um, but that brings up a lot of questions for us, for other groups as well, so, but just specifically, we have ordered the signs for this one, we do have the bridge limit signs in it.
But you made a statement, Mr. Butler, that the commission could recommend the speed limit, though, correct? Uh, we have done that before, yes, yes, thank you. I, Mr. Roy, it was time for everybody, I'm done, thank you for your time.
We appreciate y'all coming and we will certainly do exactly what we said we would do, get all of the signs up, get everything in order, and work with the DOT, but we'll give you a call and keep you updated on what's going on. Thank y'all for coming.
And I want to say on the traffic study for the intersection, like you said, the bridge is closed on Arcola right now. So, we can't really get traffic counts on Arcola right now just because of that, but, uh, that is one issue, we're not gonna get accurate traffic counts till that bridge is open.
Yeah, but do we need, I'm sorry, do we need to study that, we go ahead, pull forward a four-way stop, because it's a good, I mean, there, there's nobody in this room right here, and I guarantee you, right up that road, there's nobody here against it. And the main reason we, you know, put trucks in and put our four-way stop, there's probably no one in this room that has, that us right here having been touched by accidents right there or something.
I'll, I'll listen to this, forty-six, four forty, we, we work, that's not, you know, we work forty-six sometimes and it, it just...
It is very high.
It don't work, it don't work, if you worry, you ain't gonna worry about the traffic, or, or if you, if you hold that deep there. Or it, or it started out from our house, I'm telling you, somebody come through somewhere, don't you confuse the trucks.
It's pretty high on the surface.
That would be a simple answer.
Certainly. No, I, I tell you, I tell you, that's the way it is.
But that would be a simple solution.
I've been, I've been there, I've been there, I've been there all the time, it's been about years, really.
Yes.
And I was doing it with that bridge up there.
Now, I'm gonna have to do something, I'm gonna have to stop at the type of meeting we're having at present time. It's not that I let it get out of hand intentionally, I let it get out of hand intentionally, but I wanted to hear what y'all had to say, and, uh, but, well, minutes is just ending, so we, we're gonna move on and, um, yeah, I need to ask a question because there's one young lady here that I need to make some comments under public comments, so she can take them back to the city council, would that be in order if I did that at present time, or do I need to? Because we're just gonna lose the audience anyway when Tom goes into the bucket.
That would be fine, you, you need to make some public comments, or?
Yes, but...
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, we've won Michigan's twenty-three.
Well, I, I feel as well.
Do you still, do you still want to speak, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, yes.
Oh, you do want to speak?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, now, you were with the...
No, no.
Oh, you were to something?
No.
Okay.
I just signed the list. They, I did up there with another piece of paper, the sign or twelve. I'm not with them. I'm flying solo.
Tell us a podium, you've got four minutes.
I promise I won't be as long, but, uh, I would just like to ask, I've lived out west over Pennsylvania since oh eight, and, uh, it was built in nineteen ninety-five, and we've lived there since oh eight, and the road is in that shape. It needs overlaying, and, uh, we have grass growing up inside and up through the asphalt, and I've asked around the those who have lived there a lot longer, and to their knowledge, it has never been overlaid. And I spoke to Brad, you know, several times, and he's been very helpful to tell me that it is on the list, but I did want to come and voice, you know, the need that, uh, that it is in dire need to be overlaid. There's only one road in and out. There is a loop road, um, off of that road, you know, that's sort of Pennsylvania's last highway. If you're not familiar with it, please, it, it is in dire need. Brad, it is on the list.
It's actually an alternate on the list issue, so if the bid comes in low, we can have enough money to do it. It's about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, I think, is the estimate. And if we, if the bid doesn't come in low, I don't know, we can look to see if we got enough funds to squeeze it in there. Because he is right, we've been talking about it probably three years trying to get in. But we had, last year, we had double broken road. It just took a lot of our budget up for resurfacing, and it was ten miles long and had big potholes in it. People drive sixty miles an hour on it, so that took a lot of our budget last year. And the year before, there was a road that took a lot of our budget, and that's kind of how we ended up here. I agree, it does need to be resurfaced.
We appreciate your coming. We all hope that we can find the money to do it quick. I hope so. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, all right, Buck. Now, you know, when y'all deal on that, you got to be a chief.
We'll do it. Thank y'all.
Okay.
Is there a driver for Riley?
Yes, sir.
I'll stand over and see. I'll see what's... I'll leave the end of the car. Come see me. See you, kid. Okay, Buck.
What I wanted to speak on, and, um, Mr. Barr does not know that I'm gonna do this, but is a situation, and I've made some comments, um, that I want to clarify, that it's my opinion, not the Commission Board's opinion, because I've not mentioned this to them. Um, I guess, in the second day we were talking, and I guess I'm from the older generation rather than the newer generation, but I was asked a little while back, would we consider giving a dollar off per ticket that is so rent splash in the borough for people that got their COVID shot, or, or to encourage them to go get a COVID shot? And then we mentioned that free snow cone to encourage them to go get a COVID shot. And I guess this is where the old school comes out in me, and it's not a matter of giving a dollar off of a ticket, it's not a matter of giving a snow cone, it's a matter to me of common sense. Why don't people go get their shots? They're free. And I guess we, we have a little bit difference of opinion, and, uh, uh, some of the Commissioners told me they received something this afternoon, and, um, then I wanted to get, Mr. Barr in front of you, I don't know what they're gonna say. I've not approached them about it. But, um, now, if it, if it's a matter, I have one opinion. Here's six other opinions that we're fixing to get. Uh, don't know what they're gonna say. I'm not against giving something. You know, I got a, another text message today talking about a child that has, um, a situation, and that they didn't want to get a child out, um, with eighty percent of the people, I believe, not having had shots. And I don't know what the situation, I don't have caller waiting, I mean, a caller ID, so I don't even know who called me. Um, but, but it was shortly after I had spoken to Mr. Barr, and, um, you know, and, and I got the thinking, and maybe this is a situation where this child cannot go get a shot. I also have someone. I have a twenty-eight-year-old grandson with sixty-five breathes. Had it since birth. Thought he would die within a two-year period of time. I was twenty-eight years old and helped him. What's the first thing that he did when he found out the shots were available? He got in line. He went and got his own shot. Nobody gave him anything other than an opportunity to live if you take that shot. I'm not advising you to go get the shot. I'm saying, I'm not, I would like for the Commissioners, forget what I just said, um, I know there are other organizations that are giving, I heard one that's gonna give everybody, would go get a shot, a five-dollar bill, and that's fine. I think we've got roughly nineteen percent, twenty percent, seventeen percent, somewhere along in there, that people have gotten COVID shots in Bullock County. Um, why is the reason that people are willing to get shots? So, let's start. Kurt, do you have any ideas? I mean, what's your thought on giving away something to get somebody to go get a shot?
Well, I'll just say, uh, you and my family had the shot, and, um, just recently, my sixteen-year-old, just back in, was asked, um, when she could get a shot, and, and it's available now, and, you know, we, we, we did it, so, uh, I mean, I don't, I, I think it's just, you know, individuals, they want to get shot. I mean, I, I think they should get a shot, but I, I don't know about giving something away, if something, if something's free. Uh, that's...
I appreciate. Now, I'm gonna put everybody on the spot, because I've been put on the spot myself. Anthony?
Well, from what I'm looking at, the shot is individual decision. You should want to take it. Keep forgetting, so, I mean, it's, it's free. I don't think, really, I don't think giving away anything gonna make anybody do anything.
Mr. Roy, I'd like to jump right in. I don't want to be, because I know y'all always working asking me, and they might have given...
You just have to be sitting on that end.
All right, go ahead.
As far as the, you know, what you do about your children, if their mom and dad don't want them to have the shot, you know, you gonna put them in line out there, and you gonna sit there, take your shot, and then the other young ones, I don't wanna play with them or something. I mean, you know, hey, what, what we gonna do about that? You know, you gotta align people, get them in the, in the park, and, and this one gets a dollar off, and they ask, "Why you get a dollar off?" "Well, I've had the shot." And others says, "Well, they won't let me take the shot because they don't believe it." So, that's my opinion on that. I mean, if you want, I don't know, everybody else, if you want to get it, get it. If you don't, you know, I don't even know if I care about the HIPAA stuff. I don't, does that, does that affect us any kind of ways, again, for the HIPAA law, as far as if you ask somebody if they have the shots, or, I know that for a long time, it was hush hush, if, if anybody had it, that you could say, "Who had it?" You just had to say, "Somebody in the front had it." Uh, I don't know, I know the HIPAA would apply in that situation, the preparation, but, you make a good point, that is the, the, um, you know, enforcing it or validating who's had the vaccine. I mean, how are you gonna do that? They give you those cards, so you almost have to insist that people produce a copy of the card, so called vaccine passport, you know what I mean? I don't know, I'll let Eddie, Eddie might want to weigh in on that.
Let's let, let's let the Commissioner stay at his first, and then we'll, just to give Eddie an opportunity to figure out how you come to it. Mr. Stringer, would you?
Well, I've had the shot, and, of course, me and my wife both had the shot back in. We got, it was first available, maybe even got it before I was ready to get it, but, uh, I've had it since February, uh, or since January, excuse me. Uh, I think that it's, uh, it's a personal opinion, if you, everybody should do it, but it's like the flu shot. People don't take it, even though they know that it, that it works, uh, and, you know, there's various reasons why people don't take it, I'm sure, but, um, you can't make people take it, I don't think. And I don't think giving them something is gonna make them do it. We've given them the shot, uh, and the opportunity, so that's my opinion on that.
And Commissioner Mosley, we're gonna swap back to you.
My personal thought is, I wish everybody would take the shot. I've taken the shot, and I've encouraged, I have encouraged many over the past few weeks to take it. Again, you can't make them take it, but I also pass a message on that, uh, in talking with my position, he said that a shot won't stop you from getting COVID, but it can possibly stop you from having a long hospital, uh, stay, and from type of thing going on. So, you know, taking that in consideration, uh, we can only encourage, and, and that's something I've taken on a personal mission, is to encourage people to, to do it. And I've had a few that said, you know, me speaking up made a difference, and some, some of them said, "I'm not gonna take it," and that's, that's their prerogative, but, uh, I would say that, uh, you know, and encourage those to take it who will. Uh, as far as giving some incentive, uh, I don't know. I think, I think the incentive has to be from within that you want to be around and have a quality life for a while.
Mr. Gibson?
I don't know if I made anything different or not, but, um...
That's fine.
I think the main thing we can do is, is continue to encourage people. I've had both shots. I've got them to immediately when they became available, but you can't make nobody take them, that's for sure. And if, you say a dollar off the ticket price, well, a dollar might, if them two dollars might carry twice as many people. I don't know if the money is more border to helping the people. We can look at it, people are different ways. I have heard some parents say, several of y'all go let people into that park who haven't been vaccinated. I don't want nobody in that park that ain't been vaccinated. If my children are gonna take it, I think they ought to take it, but still, you can't make you decide to take it. But, uh, the dollar would just be an encouragement, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to it and keep on encouraging them.
Anyway, we can. And I think that's the big thing that we have encouraged. I know I put a lot of posts on Facebook about the shots, but the whole reason I did this, I don't do anything behind closed doors, and I want everybody to know that. This is not Roy Thompson's decision, whether to give a dollar off or give a snow cone or give them whatever. And maybe I am from the old generation, but the old generation tells me that if it's there and it would help save my life, nobody has to give me anything. I'm gonna be in line to get it. Now, that's not, that's not a no from this board. I mean, there may be something else that comes up, but, um, I guess the reason I wanted to do this tonight is, I don't make these type of decisions. They make their own mind of it. You just, I think you just heard, um, a resounding, "Go get your shots. We're gonna encourage you to go get your shots," but to give you something to go get a shot, we might not want to do that. And, uh, so, um, and that's all I want to say about it. It's not, it's not, that's not a dead issue if, if, um, we can open this door again, you know, if need be, but, um... Let's just say there's a change of mind. Eddie, in two minutes, could you give us some kind of an idea of how we can do this?
First off, it scares me death, because, um, we're, we're gonna have to count on high school kids and college kids to make the decision that's ticket book. That's who we hire to do the job. So, that scares me, number one. Number two, we're asking people to share their health issues with us, and I just don't feel good about that. I, I don't know that we can, I mean, someone might have to help me there, but I just don't feel good about that. Um, I don't know how we would do it. Uh, we would have to, um, uh, we'd have to figure out, you know, we're all, technology, we'd have to figure that out, how we do it. Um, I'm sure we can figure it out. Um, it just scares me that, um, maybe there's some other ways we can do awareness programs at Splash, um, instead of do it this way. Uh, if you've ever been out there, when we open those gates, especially first thing in the morning, it's cra- it's crazy, uh, for about, not two hours. I mean, there's just constantly lines, people going through, um, and, uh, we'll just have to figure out a way to make that happen if y'all decided to do that. But, if, if, there is some issues that I, I think we really need to think about first before we say, "Yes, we're gonna do something like that." Um, I've had both shots. My, all my family's had both shots. I agree with it. Um, and, uh, but I just don't know that this is the way to do that. Um, maybe there's another way we could do a program, um, to Splash, uh, to encourage people to do that, you know?
Well, let's all give thought to it.
Yes.
If there's anything we can come up with, other than what we've been doing, is promoting getting shots, uh, and I think we've all heard, we've all had our shots, and, uh, so, um, now, I am finished. We're gonna move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate everybody taking a few minutes to talk about this. Would it be possible for me to do something? I'm fewer than four minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm sharing, all right? You serve the City Council as well as the Attorney General. We just watched this, we have never, it's been trying to deal with COVID, trying to help folks deal with COVID, and I do, um, make three quick points. I don't know anybody who is saying we should make people get shots, although I empathize with the parents who are contracting. Mr. Gibson, I know a lot of parents who are not sending their children to Splash this summer because they're concerned that only nineteen percent of our population is now vaccinated, so it is pretty dangerous. Um, and as you were saying, um, Mr. Simmons about, I'm sorry, you're saying, Mr. Mosley, you're ready to comment, your doctor said being vaccinated means if you get it, you'll have a lighter case if you're healthy. Those of us who have loved ones who are not healthy are still afraid for those people to be out, even though they ran out and got vaccinated when they could, they're still at greater risk. And the fact that only nineteen percent of us aren't vaccinated means every time they go Walmart or Splash or anywhere else, they're putting themselves at great risk, because if they contract, you're hearing that ninety-six to a hundred percent, you know, vaccinated, nine percent chance you're not gonna get it, there's still four percent chance you will, and your grandson and my daughter are not likely to survive it. They happen to be one of those who guessed it. In my mind, if the Commission could get comfortable with doing this incentive, this thank you to people who have tried to make us all safer, what it would be saying is that as a Commission, we endorse people getting vaccinated, and we recognize the more of us who are vaccinated, the healthier and safer we all are. So, it's not trying to make anybody feel bad because their parent thinks differently, and it would just be showing the card. People would get in line, come up there with money or a credit card or a driver's license or different pieces, and then they'd keep up, we put in a locker. So, in my mind, it's just showing the card, and you get the dollar off. Um, but I appreciate y'all thinking about it. You know it's something serious. You know, it is a way we could continue to encourage people to go look into, look out for one another, do what we can to be healthier. So, I thank you for being willing to consider it and, and hope that we keep doing all we can to keep people as safe as we can. Thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Now, we'll move into consent agenda. Now we'll move into consent agenda. Um, we can vote on these collectively? Um, or we can single out anything and move it to the under new business?
I think we can vote on these collectively, Sharon. If there's no other comments, I'd move with approval of consent agenda.
motion. We have a second. Any more discussions? If none, all those voted to consent agenda, show hands. unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Uh, now, we're gonna move into a, this is twenty twenty-two tentative general appropriations budget. And County Manager Couch is going to present it.
I will say to begin with, uh, given a couple of comments, we may be pleased with my, with my time. But I gotta take a minute to set up and since we've all been in place for over an hour, do you wanna take a little five-minute recess?
Yeah, put, we will now have a five-minute recess.
How is your lovely parents doing? Mama is, Your mother first.
Mama is declining ever so gradually. She is about not eating very much. I saw her this morning about eleven and she never woke up when I was there, but then my wife came one afternoon and she'll wake up.
Your wife's a nurse, isn't she?
She retired from nursing and then went into the financial.
I thought she used to be a nurse.
Yep.
We had an aunt, we had an aunt in Blackshire that had this, stayed dementia and it said all the time, I remember. My mother didn't say neither one. She said, uh,
My mom is,
You could call her after. Say, Mom, how's Aunt Lucille? She said the pole soldier lost her mind. That's the way she referred to it. Well, that's the way it is. She's growing up.
Mom's diagnosed late, they call it late stage. They call it end stage, end.
End stage.
And she's down to about ninety-four pounds.
Well, Aunt Lucille was the same way in Blackshire. And I went in there with my mother a couple of times, two, three times. I was down there showing me a driver, because she was in her eighties and nineties at that time. So I went with her and drove it. And she walked in, the morning they come pick her up at home. Nine more mornings, the chair department come out there with my uncle, called the doctor at the hospital. He's on the hospital board. He called the doctor down there. They sent the deputy policeman, somebody up there. Because she just went berserk in the house. She was grabbing chairs and dishes and glasses and throwing them to the windows. Just going, breaking into the windows. She just went, she lost. So when the policeman walked in, she, just quit. And we got her in the old Blackshire hospital, which is like assisted living now. They closed the hospital. Put her to bed, got her in a room. From that day, they put her in till she died, which is three, four years later. She never opened her mouth, never said another word, didn't make a sound or nothing. Just that quick. But now they could take a spoon and touch her lips, you know? She ate applesauce and mashed potatoes. Never spoken another word. And she weighed eighty, I think it was eighty-four, eighty pounds. She was down in there. We went to the visitation. If I had not known it was her, I knew where it was going. If that, I'd have never, I'd have never in this world known who it was. Because she had dried lips and nothing. She looked shorter than she used to. You wouldn't recognize my mom. Never known who it was. If I hadn't have known the prior condition, you know? Your dad's doing pretty good.
He's getting around all right. He's pretty, uh, he gets someone down about it and I have to talk to him three or five times a day to get him to.
One of the most pleasant guys I've ever met in my life.
He continues to be mostly with me.
I mean, that's, that's, that's what I remember. Can you stop it and speak to him, man?
Uh, you, you cannot go to his room, but you can call him. They'll bring him out to a commentary.
I just wonder if he'd like to.
I'd like to start speaking to him. I could kick you going out there. I'd go at the same time. Go with me.
Yes, sir. So the lobby, as far as I go, that's right. Sometimes you give a call.
I will do that.
If you think about it.
I'll do that. Thank you.
All right. Like I said, in order to please Commissioner Russ recrimi, I'm gonna go through this as expediently as I can. But you know, there are some details I feel like that you need to know. Uh, we are presenting as of today and as was duly advertised, the tentative general appropriations budget for fiscal twenty twenty-two. Now, even though we're gonna try to cover a little bit of everything, primarily it's gonna, gonna be the general fund. But we do have some work we have to do over the next couple of weeks of the, before you adopt the budget. Cause uh, I believe there are three funds in particular that we have to reconcile and reevaluate. And that would be the SLOSS fund, the T SLOSS fund, and uh, the Aquatic Center or Splash and the Borough Fund. And I'll try to explain a little bit during the presentation, why we need to reconcile those because there are certain variables that are, that are occurring, uh, that I think require us to do that uh, before we bring the final budget to adoption. And I wanna say, uh, first of all, I wanna thank so much. I mean, we, we still need, we need to give a little credit to Andy Welch because he helped kick off the budget process for us before we left. But uh, since that time, Kristy King, our CFO, Cindy Stone, our Assistant Manager, and uh, Brianna Hayden uh, have assisted along with myself in what we call the Budget Review Team. But I wanna give particular credit to Kristy because she's done a lot of heavy lifting to try to put together the tentative budget uh, document that you have in paper, although we can furnish online as well. Um, and that we'll be posting on our website. But we've got a cou- couple of weeks of, of work to do on it, but I'm gonna try to go through this and, and try to hit the highlights as much as I can. Because again, I, I think a budget is more than just putting a bunch of numbers together. You know, it's an annual work plan. I, I think as, as commissioners, you need to understand, you know, some of the thoughts and assumptions and ideas that were put behind it. And that way it gives greater, greater meaning to the, to the numbers. Although I think you're going to find compared to recent years, the, the numbers are a little astounding due to different reasons. But it's, it's all good. That's the thing I wanted, I wanted to remember as we go forward. These are just the major topics that uh, I'm gonna go over, again, as briefly as I can. Uh, we'll be focusing a little bit more uh, on, on the general funds since that's, you know, the fund for primary operations and, and government. It's a major fund and it's where we generally apply uh, our, our tax levy, that being our general tax levy. Although we have some special district tax levies. Like I said, we began evaluating, I believe, in late January. I think Andy kicked us off. Start working on the capital budgets, which can consist of T SLOSS and SLOSS. But because of variables, I'll explain later, you know, we, we need to revisit those as, as well as the Splash Fund. We began evaluating what we call supplemental requests. What we always do is use the current year budget as the baseline budget. And then we ask for supplemental requests, uh, be it for additional positions or other kinds of resources. And then we look at the criteria and the pri- priorities that um, you all have had in place for many, many years. And we try to rationally evaluate all those criteria and priorities. There were a lot of asks this year. There's some, been some kind of demand with COVID. You remember last year, we had, we had projected a very austere budget. And uh, if we think back where we were twelve or even fourteen months ago, you remember we were talking about uh, four different types of financial scenarios from a very minor, kind of continuum, from a very minor disaster all the way to a very major disaster, not knowing how the pandemic would turn out. But whether you consider it lucky or unlucky, you know, your, your views on unlucky would probably be all the sickness and unfortunate deaths that occurred. But maybe on the lucky side, depending on, upon your opinion again, Georgia was a much more open state when it came to the pandemic. Uh, open for business, as the governor likes to say. And uh, I, I think that influenced a lot of local government's budgets to turn out to be more positive than we would have imagined twelve, fourteen months ago. And maybe it's more of a problem in harder hit states like California or New York or some of the states in the Midwest like Michigan or, or Illinois, who, who were just ravaged with this stuff and even some of the variants. But Georgia overall, uh, I, I think turned out pretty good. And uh, as I'll, I'll explain later, we, we would expect to have a fairly decent budget surplus because while we were very careful on the cost side, some ways somehow, except at the beginning of the last fiscal year for, for Splash, you know, the money came in. So many of the supplemental requests were justified, some, you know, renact or, you know, they were more weekly justified. And again, we, we tried to look at it, the BRT, the review team, uh, according to your criteria and priorities. Now, if you look in the broader sense, the major goals and priorities, and these aren't necessarily ranked order. And you remember about a month and a half ago, when we were talking about American Rescue Plan funds? You know, we were, we were trying to create a five-year financial model that we, particularly for the general fund that we think would stick and hold. So when we're looking just at this year's budget, we're not just thinking about this year. We're trying to think five fiscal years out through the end of fiscal uh, twenty twenty-six. Uh, so you know, we're, we're trying to keep all that in mind so that from year to year, when we come back with, with budget recommendations or proposals, you know, absent the cataclysmic event of like a pandemic or a god awful recession, you know, we, we can try to throw some reliable assumptions and numbers at you. You know, another priority that we're going to have this year in our budget, uh, it'll probably be a, a slow, slow walk going into next year's budget. But we're trying to get all of the departments to introduce performance measures. And a performance measure is kind of a blend between a workload measure saying, how much do you do? But you're trying to transform that into some kind of ratio or some other variable. Not only how much do you do, but how well do you do it? And we think if we can implement performance measures properly for each department, we can do an even better job of evaluating their supplemental requests in, in the future to make sure that it meets a need or, or a goal or a priority. I think this year, provided we afford ourselves a time, we wanna look at uh, strategic revenue diversification and cost control. We're al- we're always looking at ways to save money, especially on the non-personnel side, whether it's through energy efficiency or other types of productivity, uh, with either with technology or, or other means. But I think we have to look at revenue diversification, which I'll talk about a couple of examples later, which um, whether we need to reevaluate our fee structure or whether we need to introduce new types of revenues that, that we haven't had before, that, that are, you know, more key based or more uh, centric to, uh, you know, the user of that, of the user of a service. That way, hopefully, that it gives us the opportunity to provide property tax relief or at least avoidance of, of future increases. A, a very important thing that I think will demonstrate in, in this budget is developing the county workforce. Uh, it's probably not catchphrase more than anybody else's, but you know, I, I hope it would catch fire if something would. I would like to see Bullet County Government be the employer of choice in Bullet County. We want to be the organization that people want to work for, not only because we're providing excellence in service, but we're, we're able to fulfill uh, the, the financial and economic and psychological needs of having a workplace. And you know, I've been here seventeen years and I think most of you have heard me say this uh, quite often over time. I like to have a place where you whistle while, while you work. I truly believe that if you're happy in what you're doing, you'll be a, a better, more productive worker and also a worker who we hope through some of the things that we wanna try to do will be the kind that we can offer opportunities for advancement or, or a career. We'd love to have every employee say, I spent all my thirty years of work or, or however many years, my career working for Bullet County. Uh, another goal or priority, and we've talked about it, the idea of forming the one-stop permit center is we need to improve capacity for planning and development services. permit centers, we need to improve capacity for planning and development services, not just make it convenient for the customers who use it, but we also have to improve or build the capacity to improve our strategic planning, whether it's our comprehensive plans, our transportation plans, or just broader plans in general, that help make the community a better place to live. And then finally, and again, these aren't ranked order, I think we need to have a serious evaluation on our economic development efforts. I don't think we've had a major industry come here in at least 10 years. I think we need to reach out to our economic development partners, whether they're economic development organizations, or our municipalities, or even the state. But one of the things that really drives what we do, not just with the budget, but in our community, is our population growth. If the new, the recent 2020 census estimates, not the official count, but they call them the vintage estimates, which should be pretty true to the census count, as a county, Bullet County will have now, or back in April, or July, whenever those vintage numbers were taken, 81,000 residents, maybe 82,000 today. You can see the growth, you can see it in the traffic, you can see it in the Congress that's going on, you can see it in the building permits. We're growing, and as we grow, we can't stay in the dark ages. We've got to create a modern, service-oriented organization that's responsive to our citizens. And this is a fact. You know, if you look at per capita expenditures among our 15 peer counties, half below us, half above us in population, we rank in the lower third or one quarter per capita expenditures. Now, that doesn't mean we're cheap, I think it means we're frugal. It doesn't mean that we have to jump to the top of the heap or anything like that. And likewise, on the revenue side, we are among the lowest in terms of property tax rates, tax collections in general. But the only reason I illustrate a fact like this is to let you know, and it links back to the population growth. We are going to try to be frugal on the cost side. We hope we will be fortunate on the revenue side. But the thing we have to remember is we're now serving 81,000 people, and when I got here, it was a little less than 60, and it seemed like yesterday. And I'm sure some of you can remember growing up here when it was probably 25, 30, 35,000 people. All right, our financial condition. The reason you want to have a good or ideal financial condition is for cash flow purposes, so we don't have to take out what I call a payday loan, a tax anticipation note. You want to have sufficient funds for contingent emergencies, and it's good for our credit worthiness, and makes borrowing much less expensive. As you have seen, just with the purchase of nearly $2 million in fire engines, and we get a lease purchase rate of 0.88%, that's virtually free money. So it's good to have a good financial condition. But as I say, or as you see at the bottom here, we can't pour cash either. We've got to take advantage of the good financial condition to provide the services that our citizens and the rest of the community need. So as we end the fiscal year, and these numbers are subject to change, but according to the last report, if you don't account the CARES money, if you don't account the ARPA money, we should have somewhere in excess, maybe up to $1.7 million surplus in the general fund. Okay, Christie isn't shivering, so I guess I get the numbers okay on that. But you know, there's a ratio to test our financial condition, and that's taking basically the non-revenue money that you have in the bank here on June 30th, and applying that against your general fund revenues. Ideal ratio is 25%. If we end the year like we predict, we should be at 28%. And just for a base of reference, when things were really bad before the 2015 tax rate increase, and we were still getting out of a great recession, we dipped down to about 14% when we were yea close to borrowing money until the taxes came in. So through a lot of prudent decisions and a lot of good financial management, not just by financial administration, but county-wide, we're in a much better place than we were six, eight, 10 years ago. In this general fund projection, this is just that chart that we talked about when we were talking about the American Rescue Plan. It's kind of a reflection of where we want to see the general fund, or where we see the general fund going over the next five years, going out to 2026. And we may or may not get into slight deficits in the next two or three years, depending upon different factors, but even if we did get into slight deficits, we're going to be okay, because we'll still be able to meet, we hope, absent of a cataclysmic event, our ideal fund reserve ratios. As far as many other funds, and I'm not going to take a deep dive in it, our Employee Health Insurance Fund is adequate. We did have a pretty big hit with claims this year, but luckily, we have a very good fund reserve that we think will get us through. And fortunately, as you'll see in another slide, we're in a position where in this upcoming year, which I don't know, it'll be more than 10 years since we've asked our employees to absorb any kind of increase in their insurance premiums. And at the same time, recently, a couple of months ago, we've tried to enhance the benefits. So that's been managed well. Now, Aquatic Center or Splash is constrained, but I think during staff comments, Mr. Cannon would like to say a few good words about the great launch we've had so far in the season at Splash that gives us hope. We still have to figure out a way to see if we can transfer some of this ARPA money to help with the financial recovery of the Splash Fund, not only so that we can make those big payments, but so Splash can be on its own legs again. 911, airport, immigration, operationally and fund reserves. Statesboro Fire District will be entering the second year of a five-year agreement, and according to that agreement, the military is to go up to 2.25 mils from 1.8. Remember, that's the agreement that they authorized last year in conjunction with the city. And then, we have to be mindful, just like we do in our rural fire fund, Statesboro, just like we have, has applied SACR grants for additional firefighters, and while those grants will substantially pay for the additional personnel for either three or four years, I think, sooner or later, that grant goes away, and if Statesboro or the county gets SACR awards at some point in the future, we're probably going to have to look at adjusting those militaries. But again, we hope the payoff is, I don't know if that Statesboro Fire District can, well, I guess they can go from ISO 2 to 1, but...
They wouldn't have a residential. That wouldn't help residential.
That wouldn't help residential, you know. I mean, we've got a longer bar to, or a higher bar to jump over, but we're determined to jump over it to try to get a five, or hopefully better. So, you know, all things being equal, we have a lot more gap or movement that we can go through, a bigger hole, if you will, if you're a running back. And if we can hit our ISO numbers, and if we have to go up in the rural fund taxes in a couple of years or whenever, then the payoff or the offset will be over insurance rates, particularly for residential customers. So that would be the plus. But right now, the rural fire fund's in great shape. We've got money, and we're able to do things, and we're trying to execute. Okay, not going to go through the whole thing, but if you look at the whole budget, and we've got some reconciliation to do on those three funds that I talked about, but just the budgeting numbers, you know, the one way you want to think of this is that there's a good bit of money that you're taking out of one pocket and putting into another with all of these transfers and internal service funds. But we're budgeting with all of the combined funds over $88 million, but when it nets out, it's probably going to be more like 70, 90, or 80. But that does not include, you know, any funds we would use out of what's left over in CARES or the American Rescue Plan money. You know, if you put those two sources together, hypothetically, that could be another $10 or $12 million if we had the ability to convert and spend all of it. General fund's at 46, basically, and again, we think that we're going to have, within this structural budget, if nothing goes wrong, a modest surplus, and like I said, goes left, I think that's a perfect call. But we think we'll have $205,000 available for contingencies, and there's a strong likelihood that we will get some vacancy savings, because what we do when we budget, so you have a good structural budget on the expense side, if we've got vacant positions or if we've got additional positions, we budget for them with the assumption that everybody starts on July 1st. Because if we don't do it that way, we're really distorting the object of what a good structural budget is. So as a result of either delays in hiring, you know, people come and go, some people quit, you got to hire new people, we're going to have some vacancy savings. I can't tell you with any confidence what it might be, but it could be, you know, $300 to $500,000, or it may not be that much at all. You know, the new positions that we're recommending may get hired quick, we may fill our existing vacancies quick, but by experience, you know, we should get some kind of low six figures at the minimum. So that's where we think, absent of an unforeseen event, we have an opportunity to have a modest surplus for this year. On the revenue side, strong digest growth, you know, that's one of the big drivers. But the one thing in particular that I want to draw your attention, and I want you to hear me on, we believe that we're still waiting on what we call, not final numbers, but final final numbers from the tax assessor's office, but we're going with his most conservative figures on property taxes right now. Our current knowledge rate for the general levy is 11.833 mils. Now, when Mr. Scott has finished, I'm sure he's willing to submit to us what I call a statutory rollback rate with taxpayer bill rates law that you're familiar with, or as you more affectionately know as the three tax earnings. We believe with the budget that we're recommending that we could do a modest rollback, although we may not go back all the way to the statutory rate. And the reason that is, or reasons are, as I will demonstrate, we are challenged to meet the unmet needs of public safety in the courts. Courts are getting more expensive, and I'll walk you through that in a minute, but we have needs in the Sheriff's Department with personnel. We've been given a five-year plan, we'd like to follow that five-year plan for additional personnel to the best of our ability. We've front-loaded some positions in other areas that there will be, perhaps in our five-year plan, less opportunity to do that in the future. There's a few positions that we didn't fund that would probably be next up for next year if we have the funds available. But the public safety in the courts have had unmet needs, I think, for a number of years, and I think the Budget Review Team, as we'll show you with some of the specifics, feel strongly that now is the time to try to meet those unmet needs. But we did try to meet some in other areas. Now, this is a big-picture thing about personnel adjustments, and you know, some of it has to do with compensation adjustments, because you remember, in this fiscal year, we were unable to offer anything to employees, at least so we thought at the time. So as far as a cost of living adjustment, call it across-the-board, whatever you will, you know, we propose a first payroll period in July, full payroll period, might be a couple-day lag, it won't be July 1st, and all full-time, part-time, and part-time seasonal employees get 4% COLA. Then, 3% performance, like we have had in the past, again, first payroll period, full payroll period in January, full-time only, I believe, or is it full-time and part-time permanent?
Full-time and part-time permanent.
Yes. So up to a 3% performance increase based on a sliding scale. And a couple of unique opportunities is that, one, we'd like to provide a match in the retirement plan, the 401/457 plan, and the way it works, it's 50 cents on the dollar, but if you're an eligible employee in the plan, if you put up to 4% of your earnings into the 457 voluntary plan, then the county will match on the 401 side 2%. Now, you can go from, you know, 0% to 2% or 0% to 4%, but it's basically a 50% match up to 4%. If Commissioner Deale takes his earnings and he puts 4% of whatever your salary is, the county, oops, I don't want that again, the county will match 2%. So we, oops. Commissioner Rush is ready for a stand ovation for my male employee. Well, I can back up. Okay, I'll have to go off the panel, but the other process for the Sheriff's Department, if you're a post-certified officer, and I think I just accidentally left the lead in my file, that would be okay, but, ah, there we go.
Snuck a change.
Yeah. And Commissioner Rush, he was just about ready to go, yeah. But for post-certified personnel in the Sheriff's Department, we are recommending, I don't know, you don't pay POAD?
Yes.
County's going to pay your POAD monthly. So that will be an added plus. Because actually, and I didn't know this until this year, we do it for our firefighters, why not for the other bandits, right? So, and I think those are the two classes that are relevant under POAD. So we tell all your friends, but then ultimately, we're going to do a minor increase for board tax assessment statements and increase in volunteer statements, and we're still trying to figure out mathematically whether we can go $5, $10 a call, like I spoke with you, and that would come out of the fire code. Now, in this slide, in the next slide, you're going to see a lot of additional opinions, not opinions, although you may have additional opinions, but you're going to see a lot of personnel, but it's going to be okay. We got it. And that gets into it a little more, and I'm not going to step into each one, and you're going to get a copy of this slideshow, and is it reflected in the tentative budget document if they read it? The additional positions?
Not the list of them, no.
Okay, well, I'll send you a copy of this PowerPoint, so you can review it further. But you know, this is a schedule of additional personnel. In the red, that's special funds, and not necessarily the general fund, general funds in the black font, but we thoroughly reviewed it, and with the structural revenues, we can afford to do this. It's entirely met or intended to meet unmet and deferred needs. Now is the Now is the time. Uh, now, we, we did have some outside agencies and this is sort of a reflection you can see in the judiciary where, where it's getting a little bit expensive. Uh, the juvenile court is kicking in full gear evidently. Um, but we've also decided to, um, increase a couple of the, I'll call them either cultural or human service agencies, the senior center, Action Pack, uh, the library hasn't had an increase in three years, CRC Transit, Coastal Regional Coaches hasn't had an increase in twelve years. So we've, uh, we've fit that all in and we think it's, um, sustainable, but we, we are gonna have to have a meeting with the, the judiciary because when they sit, submit their budgets, it's just all over the charts and I don't wanna sound integrating about it, but we just need to have a little kumbaya because there's not a lot of consistency in what we see when, when we're trying to figure out, how to honor supplemental requests and I won't get into the weeds with it. Just know that we're, we're gonna talk to the judiciary about it. Uh, we've got some other fiscal warrants, you know, some commodities and, and services have, have gone up in expenses, but one thing that I wanna point out here in the purple block is that, and we don't know if this is gonna be a one-off thing, it could be, or it could be something perpetual that we wanna do. But we want, and it's based off of one of the many employee surveys that we've sent out, is, uh, and actually, we're, we hope a lot of things are addressed through, in the budget through these surveys. But we want to establish a leadership and or management development training program to train our emerging leaders, leaders that are in the county. We believe that there are a lot of candidates who may be possibly lower level, mid-level supervisors, they could even be existing department heads. But I think the target of what we want, uh, or the target group that we wanna reach out to is we want, we want to try to recruit, nominate, select candidates that have up to twenty in the initial class. And we're working with the Benson Institute of Government to form this program, which hopefully we can kick off in the fall. But we want to be able to train our emerging leaders that are coming up. If, and that goes back to strengthening our workforce and, and trying to find people who want to have a meaningful career working for Bulla County, being an employer of choice. And we think having a program like this, at least initially, will hopefully inspire people to follow a career path with Bulla County. And as a result of what they learn in this, they can be your next department heads or assistant manager or county manager or division directors. You know, we want to find these candidates because I can assure you, I don't know what the last town is, but there, there are at least a dozen department heads and existing leaders who aren't going to be here that long. Now, I'm not, I'm gonna pick on some, on a couple people, but I'm not. Ted, wake up, brother.
I'm with you.
You gonna, you gonna be here for, for the next ten or fifteen years?
Not likely.
Eddie?
I'm with him.
Dave?
That's right.
Jeff?
I don't know.
But, but all things being equal, you see what I mean? You know, we've, we've got, we've got to try to, to comb our workforce and, and, and put people into this program who are interested in having a, a, a career path with Bulla County. And that will be potentially your next Ted's, Eddie's, Eddie, Dave, Jeff, as long as nobody screws up, you got me lined up, I think. But, uh, but at the end of the day, that's, that's, that's what we want to do. If we don't consider it an expenditure, we consider it an investment. And I'm just gonna try to scoot this along as much as I can, you know, watch list, you know, things we gotta look out for. You can read all this stuff later, it, it might be a little, little too esoteric for this discussion, except you may wanna watch on the expenditure side. You know, new laws with elections, we don't know how costly that's gonna be. There's still public safety personnel needs, not only in the sheriff's, sheriff's department, but in the MS and fire. Inflation with all the stimulus money out there, we gotta be on the lookout for that. And I already spoke about economic development and what our return on investment is. Other funds on the watch list, I won't go, I won't go into those, uh, I've already talked about them once. Same with capital projects. You know, we, we've got, uh, a little bit of work to do before you adopt the budget. But the thing that you need to know is we, you know, when we started the budget, the budget process in January, you know, we were looking at SPOS and T-SPOS revenues, but I would say even in the last six months, I mean, for both, for both, uh, revenue sources, they have cranked up. I mean, the way I look at it, there is a slight risk that if T-SPOS keeps coming in the way it's coming in now or the last six months, you know, our T-SPOS could expire before the full five years. Probably not by, by mon, much, but possibly three to six months in advance, which by that time, we hope, we think we'd be talking about putting together another referendum anyways. But we would certainly fix our projections because the difference between SPOS and T-SPOS is if, if our SPOS is seventy-two million bucks for six years, if we collect excess funds, we can keep them in applied projects. With T-SPOS, you can't. When you hit that sixty million, game over. You know, so next time around, we might go seventy million or seventy-five, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that then. But I just wanted to, wanted you to know that those are coming in very well, and that's the reason we have to reconcile our capital budgets because we wanna look for opportunities to put in additional projects, whether it's a Highway Forty-Six intersection or a west over resurfacing or, or, or something like that. So we, we wanna bring you a more accurate picture of it, even though we still have to commit ourselves to a T-SPOS workshop to talk about dirt roads. Hopefully this summer, try to work around vacations on things like that. You know, look forward, not gonna go deep with it, you know, you, you, you can re-admit your leisure, but, you know, we, these are just a menu of items that we, we have to look at. Cause we can put the best five-year projection or financial projection together in the world. But again, all it takes is a cataclysmic event to make the whole, whole plane go south. So you can read about that and these are, and on the expenditure side as well, you know, just things that we have to look out for. Although I, I will say, you know, well, I promised I'd never use guns versus butter, you know, that, that metaphor, but, you know, that's just a way of saying on the operational side, we got distributional decisions to make over the next five years on how we're gonna fund things. And then, um, on the guns versus butter thing, it's usually like, you know, cops and public safety versus other services, but to make the non-public safety feel, uh, side feel better, yeah, public safety needs are guns, but, you know, an army doesn't want marching an empty stomach, which is the non-public safety side. But two things we're gonna have to look at long-term, you know, and we won't do it this year or next year, but maybe by late next year, future court facilities or possibly even a jail pod. Um, and these are just some other challenges, some that I've already, you know, gotten into, final benchmarks, you know, final schedule. Uh, we're gonna do our reconciliations with the capital budgets and splash. Next week, uh, we have a public hearing, five-thirty, June the eighth, you all know the drill on that. Because we represent it in the public notices, the governing body will have a hearing, we at least like to have a forum. Um, so if you, if you have any serious con, con, excuse me, conflicts, let, um, Alunki and I know so we can, um, call it how we wanna play. And then we should be set and we're confident that we can come to the next regular meeting, um, and ask you to adopt the budget. All right. This is where we like, as I like to state, uh, to say, we start showing pecans, which is a metaphor for a le, a less tasteful metaphor. But, um, do you have any questions, comments, or thoughts, albeit, you know, this is your first look at this stuff? But I will say, I have a lot of confidence in what we put together, we've got a good structural budget, we can fund the things that are in here, and I think we can sustainably fund them, uh, fund them absent of cataclysmic event, which we can never predict. But, um, we feel very good about it, we think it's robust, we think it meets a lot of deferred needs. And, uh, absent of reconciliation, you know, we would encourage adoption. But on the same token, being that it's tentative budget, you've got two weeks to look this over, to ask harder questions, to make harder critiques, and, you know, you're certainly welcome to do so and we will, we will take it into consideration. Because while we're presenting this publicly and while I've emailed a copy of these slides to our department heads, I said, you know, you guys, you guys call the shots. This is what we're gonna recommend. There could, there could very easily be some changes. So for the next two weeks, if you see something in there that you don't like, that doesn't resonate well, you know, let us know as early as you possibly can. And believe it or not, that's all I got to say. Unless you have a question.
I knew, I knew that wasn't good, so. No, I didn't. We have any questions to comment? Tom at First Glass, um, you all have done a wonderful job. It's, um, you and everybody else involved, so, um, I don't think we've got two weeks to come up with questions unless anybody else has.
Yes, or anything immediately on your mind?
I think we have to sort of look at it vertical when you add too many, cause it's probably something.
Yeah, well, I'm at your disposal. We, I mean, we can, we can rock, walk through that three-hundred pages and go line by line, or you can look at the slides when I get them to you. But yeah, we want, we, we want your feedback, you know, we're not asking for a rubber stamp. But we do, we do feel very, very kind of confident in the budget.
Tom, can I add one thing in real quick, just for the commissioners, so that you know, this is not the complete budget document. It has all the budget numbers in it, but all the charts and things like that we're working on, um, so you have all the prudent information that you need. But when you said three-hundred pages, I just wanted to make sure you know that you're gonna see some page, maybe some skip pages and things like that. That's, that's just sort of, I guess, for lack of a better term, the fluff that goes inside the document, but not necessarily what you needed for this meeting.
But on the other hand, using it as a tool gives you a lot more detail in what can be presented in the slides. So, you know, we, we encourage you to ask questions or make critiques.
Well, we can't wait to get the rest of the papers till we can go through each and every one of them and then determine the questions that we have, but.
We figured you'd be really upset for not having the rest.
For tonight?
We apologize.
Thank you for what you, the partial pages that you presented. Now, great presentation.
Hey, and I want you to remember though, the general fund, we, we believe we can, we can do some kind of rollback on the property taxes, but it may not go all the way back to the statutory rate, which would induce the free hearings. But we can get something and I, I think our case to the public is, is that we've got to meet unmet and deferred needs for public safety in the courts. And I don't think anybody will, you know, swing a Louisville, Louisville slogan right here for them.
Yeah. Do you have any questions? If not, we're gonna move on to new business. Thank you, Tom. And the rest of you all. Uh, we're gonna, now, we're gonna, we have a resolution to approve stop-loss insurance and associated administrative fees for the twenty-one, twenty-two year, uh, for the employee health plan and, and the head will make the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I have more good news, I guess, and that is, um, I am bringing you tonight, um, a resolution and a request to approve stop-loss insurance at an overall cost of less than our expiring plan. So that's the, really the bottom line. Um, you all know that we are self-funded for our health insurance for employees. Um, what that means is that, um, when employees have insurance claims, the county is on the hook, we, we fund out of our, um, budget dollars, um, their, those claims up to a hundred thousand dollars for each individual. Um, once an individual reaches a hundred thousand dollars, we purchase what's called stop-loss insurance, which is just another layer of protection. Um, and, and that claim then reverts to the stop-loss insurance carrier for payment at that point. Um, it is not, um, an inexpensive product to purchase, but it's important for our financial stability. Um, this year, we are recommending that we make a change in carrier. Um, as Mr. Couch alluded to during his budget presentation, this was not a great year for, um, in terms of claims. We did have a higher than normal claims activity this year. Our, um, health insurance fund is in great shape, we're not concerned, um, I think I could speak for CFO, we're not concerned about the fund, but it wasn't a great year for claims. So our existing, uh, insurance provider, um, recommended or, or quoted us a rate that was, um, quite an increase over our expiring rates. So as we do every year, we search the marketplace for other alternatives, um, we always like to see what else is available. And we have an alternative quotation this year from Companion Life Insurance Company who, um, despite the, the year that we've just, that we're coming out of, has really looked at our, um, business overall over the last several years, our experience, and has quoted us, again, a rate that is less expensive than expiring. So that specific stop-loss coverage, um, is about a little over ten percent lower than what we're currently paying. Um, the aggregate stop-loss is about twelve percent lower and the administrative fees are unchanged from last year. Bottom line is, um, the anticipated fixed cost, and I say anticipated because they do fluctuate based on how many employees are covered by the plan, but the anticipated fixed cost, um, for the stop-loss coverage, uh, is about seven-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand dollars, which is approximately ninety thousand dollars less than our existing fees. So having said that, um, we are making the recommendation that we go with Companion Life Insurance. I've attached a resolution to the agenda that authorizes, um, this purchase, this decision, and authorizes the county manager to execute, uh, the documents that need to be executed to make this change effective July first. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm glad to admit one thing, that you had me so when you said less than last year. So do we have any questions?
Well, why do we have a greater, what was the reason for the greater amount of claims left?
Um, we had, uh, a couple of peoples, a handful of people on our plan that experienced some severe illnesses, some serious illnesses, just a little bit greater than we normally anticipate. Um, you know, it's always a, a bit of a guessing game as to, um, what kinds of claims experience we'll have, but it was just a higher than normal year due to some illnesses in people. Um, so, so they were, it wasn't, um, a lot of small things, there were several employees and dependents that had some serious illnesses.
Anyone else? None, I seek a motion to approve this resolution.
So, Mr. Chairman? Say.
Motion, I don't expect any more discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion who have hands, unanimous approval. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next is commissioner comments and or staff comments, and we'll go to staff first. Yes, sir.
I'd like to take a second if we could to talk a little bit about Splash, and I'll give you an update on the way to more and what's going on there, too. Uh, we had a opening, uh, our opening was last weekend, um, it was pretty amazing, um, people just showed up and, uh, we had a great crowd all weekend long, last weekend, this past weekend, um, actually Saturday was a record number. Um, and so, um, people are just wanting to get out and they, um, want to come to Splash. Um, if you go to the parking lot, you look at, um, where they're from, they're all over the region, I mean, it, from everywhere they're coming, um, there's people from Charleston, there's people from Augusta, there's people from Macon, there's people from all over.
So, that's the only comments that I have. Anybody else have anything to say?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something.
Yes, sir.
Me and you just cut food all the time, but being the newest commissioner up here, when I first got here, I didn't really realize what all went on, and I know, I don't like to call names because I always leave somebody out, so if I leave you out, I'm sorry, but I've seen a bunch of them, I thought I'd been here for years, but I didn't realize that guy here right before I did, in fact, I just did meet Mr. Dean the other day, I think, but I just appreciate what all y'all do. I know, Tom, especially this year, trying to open everything back up, budget season, I know Cindy, I think she's still got two jobs, I can't really show her. I mean, I talk to her all the time, but I didn't realize how much went on in this matter, and all of everybody, Miss Lacy, Missy Hagan, a lot of people that you don't see immediately, somebody printed all this off, and it was plum hot in that room when it was raining, we were running the cop here, but I just wanted to tell everybody, thank everybody for this, I'm sorry, appreciate everything you do, I didn't have any idea what all went on until I started coming up here about every day, and that was going to be all I can do, look through what they got put together for me at hand, but I just wanted to say, y'all, I appreciate it.
Thank you for those kind words for them. Anyone else?
To get to who's in order, I'm going to need to repeat all of it, but I'd like to salute all of you. Kenny King, you always like to say, I said, I appreciate y'all.
You know, I could, I think I've said enough tonight already, and, but it's amazing if you hang around up here, just how much work, and out in the field, just how much work goes on to make all this happen. And, you know, Tom, you made a comment, we want people to want the work here, and best place to work, and I firmly feel that myself, we already have the best employees of anybody, but I'm upside any organization or any business, and so it's a struggle to make it all happen. And I did want to make a point, one more point tonight, we are a seven-man commission board, six make the decisions, and I just pass that decision on, and, but working together, my favorite saying, all things are possible, so, and I thank y'all for your efforts. And my favorite, I'm not going to play any tonight with this, we're going to go into executive session with personnel, and I must now call for a motion to adjourn in the executive session, and according to the provisions, OCTA, AEOU and other act of law to advise of county attorney, yes, for the purpose of consultation, county attorney to discuss personnel matters, I need a motion to enter into executive session. Sir. All right, we are now in executive session, so...